Public Safety Committee, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Kadeem.
Here.
Counselor La Liberty Laboe. Counselor La Liberty Laboe.
Here.
Chairman Peckham.
Here. Um, we gotta take a vote to open the meeting, correct? Due to Zoom. Is there a motion to, uh, to open the meeting?
I moved.
Second.
All right, with that being said, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadeem.
Yeah.
Counselor La Liberty Laboe.
Here.
Chairman Peckham.
Yeah. First item on the agenda, citizens input, Madam Clerk.
I have two commissions for citizens input. The first one is from Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street in Fall River. Good afternoon, members of the Fall River City Council Committee on Public Safety. I wish to speak on two matters today. First of all, I wish that our citizens input is fairly applied to all members of our community. At the last meeting, Counsel Lee spoke during citizens input for nearly 10 minutes, while the rest of us mere citizens are only allowed three minutes. Counsel Lee is not part of the Public Safety Committee, and I understand Counsel Lee may feel entitled to do whatever he wants, however, he should respect the rules of the council and act within decorum. Secondly, on the matter of Northeast Alternatives, enough is enough. I am sick and tired of this corrupt sham company bribing our politicians, trying to get an unfair competitive advantage. And now they are a public safety hazard to our residents and to our community. We need to pull the cord on Northeast Alternatives. We should cut their community host agreement and not hold ourselves hostage to bad actors who do not do what's best for our community. We need a maverick on the city council, someone who is not afraid to do what's right for the community and not afraid of the political bigwigs. And we can place the community first. Northeast Alternatives should be forbidden from doing business in Fall River. Thank you very much for your time, submitted, Colin Dias.
This is Chairman, just a point of order. Can Kat, do you, do you have that open meeting law that we need to read?
The open, Chris read it already.
I did read it.
Yeah.
The open meeting law statement, yeah, Chris already.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The next.
I don't mean to interrupt, Madam Clerk, Vice President, well, well, Liberty, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak on Colin's citizens input. I appreciate that he sends citizens input so often. However, in the case of Counselor Lee, at the last public safety meeting, he is actually the counselor that submitted that resolution. And his speaking at meeting wasn't necessarily the citizens input. He was there with the homeowner on Quikashan Street and was giving the members of the committee an update as to what had been going on there. And as the chair, you're, you're allowed to let anybody speak either for three minutes or however long and where they were giving information. I don't, I don't want people to think that, you know, unfairly treated in any way. But Counsel Lee did submit that resolution and was just giving us the information as he knew it.
Yep. With, with that, you are absolutely correct. He did file the resolution and was allowed to, to speak at the last public safety meeting along with a couple of other people. So you're absolutely correct.
The next citizens input is from Jeffrey Espinola, 74 Commonwealth Avenue. To whom it may concern, my name is Jeffrey Espinola, and I live right behind Northeast Alternatives with my wife and three kids. I would like to express my concern about a few things that really bother us for quite a while now. First, about the awful smell that comes out of the building. It was too strong that the smell goes inside our house. It sticks to our clothes and our couches. My kids used to love going in our backyards to play or simply hang out and now hated it because of the foul smell. When we bought our house, we expected a nice and comfortable surroundings where we can enjoy our backyard with peace and quiet time with our kids. But ever since the Northeast Alternatives came into our neighborhood, it takes all of that away from us. I mean, who would want to spend time in their yard or who or what kid would want to enjoy and play in the yard when they can smell that rancid smell every day? Nobody. Second, the traffic congestion. It's made our life miserable. Sometimes the lines of cars goes all the way around up the highway and we get stuck with it and have to be in line just to be able to go home to our house. It's ridiculous. Our neighborhoods used to be nice and quiet, but now we have to deal with cars flying down our street and sometimes get cursed at by people who park in our street when, when we tell them they cannot park there. Yes, there is still park on our street. Yes, people still park on our streets when they don't feel like waiting in a long line. They pull into our driveway and sometimes drive over our lawn. Third, the loud humming sound coming from the building day and night. My kids can't go to sleep and they have to go to school in the morning. It's unbearable and it's not fair for us and my kids to go through that every day. Not to mention when they have a truck delivery in the early morning. I know it may not seem like a big deal, but try living next to it. A few feet apart and hear the truck engines running loud and that awful beep it makes every, makes early in the morning that wakes my kids up every time they hear it. The bottom line is, we think that the dispensary shouldn't be there. It's just the wrong spot for them to operate a business. This is a cul-de-sac and a lot of kids around our neighborhood. And we don't feel safe anymore seeing different people parking and going in and out of our street. It makes our life miserable and they don't seem to be helping us out about it. That's all I've got to say for now, and I want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to voice our concerns. Have a good day and God bless you all. Sincerely, the Espinola family.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
That's all the citizens input.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Number 20, Agenda 28, Quikashan Street. Is there a motion to move from the table?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. With that being said, I would like to touch upon. I don't know if anybody else could hear that, but there was some feedback.
Okay, I just need to take a roll call.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Madam Clerk. I apologize.
On the motion to lift from the table, Counselor Kadeem.
Yes.
Counselor La Liberty Laboe.
Yes.
Chairman Peckham.
Yes. Regarding 28 Quikashan, uh, the last public safety meetings seemed to have kind of quelled the situation at that location. I know Vice President La Liberty was able to attend the meeting with the police chief and some neighbors. Did you not, Vice President? I'm sorry.
No, I just, I spoke to the chief after.
Okay, I apologize. I misunderstood. Chief, would you like to touch upon 28 Quikashan and the, uh, maybe some of the improvements that have happened since the last meeting? You're on mute, Chief.
I've kept in contact with Mrs. Castellano and the folks that work in the Special Operations Unit have also been up there quite frequently, kept in contact with her and some of the neighbors. And my last phone conversation with her, um, earlier in the week was that things were much better. And her only complaint at this time was that the cars that drive around the neighborhood, County Street, Pleasant Street and Quikashan, the young kids often blast their radios. So she has some concerns about that. So we put some folks up there from the traffic unit, we're gonna address that issue.
I thank you for that. With the matter seeming, seeming to be better than it was, um, I'd find it appropriate to motion a leave to withdraw from the table if anybody would like to make that motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Vice President.
Chief, are you going to keep in touch with her?
I'm sorry.
Are you gonna keep in touch with her?
Counsel Peckham, can you hear her? I can't hear her.
Yeah, she asked if you were gonna keep in touch with Ms. Castellano.
Absolutely.
Okay. I yelled.
Okay, is there a motion of withdraw from the table?
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
On the motion to grant item number two of 28 Quikashan Street, leave to withdraw, Counselor Kadeem.
Yes.
Counselor La Liberty Laboe.
Yes.
Chairman Peckham.
Yes. Item number three, Northeast Alternatives. Is there, we don't need a motion to open, correct? It was referred?
Correct.
Okay. Um, let me, I'm sorry, I gotta find the, uh, Madam Clerk, could you read the original resolution? Do you have that with you?
Yes. Whereas the residents around the area of Northeast Alternatives have expressed many concerns in regards to traffic, noise, air pollution over the past several months. And whereas the residents are seeking a solution to their concerns, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance, along with the city administrator, director of traffic, director of code enforcement, and a representative from Northeast Alternatives convened to discuss possible solutions. This was first adopted in November, um, November 12th of 2019, and then it was referred at a meeting of the city council on January 14th, 2020, to the Committee on Public Safety.
Okay. And we don't need a, a motion to open discussion on the topic, correct? Okay, excellent. Does anybody want to speak on the topic? All right, well, I'll open up. I, uh, I've been in contact with Chief Cardoza, who's, uh, I can't say, working diligently to find a remedy to the, the issue that, uh, the residents are having in that area. I know Chief Cardoza has been working with Northeast Alternatives to also come and try to rectify issues that may be of concern. But on the flip side, I also understand the concerns of the residents. I've read a lot of the emails that have come through. I remember your, uh, you speaking at one of the meetings. With that being said, I would like to try to find a remedy. I know it's gonna be tough, but I think an open discussion in, uh, a setting like this is great, considering we have members from Northeast Alternative and a few residents here. Chief, uh, when it comes to Northeast Alternatives, what ideas have you had?
Well, um, one of the problems that we've been having, Counselor, is the details on Thursday, Friday and Saturdays, which tends to be their busiest sales time. The, a lot of the officers in, in, in the police department have not been taking those details. So I did a little, uh, had some conversation with some of the folks in, in the union and we split the hours. In other words, it was an eight hour detail, noon to eight, noon to 8:00 PM. So what we did, we, we split the hours, we agreed to do that. So there'll be, um, four hour details. I've asked Jared to buy some cones to split the Southbound Lane into two lanes, one that would turn right onto Commonwealth Avenue, one that would go straight. I also spoke with Ms. Ferreira from, from Traffic. We're gonna suggest that maybe a right-hand turn only, at least giving it a try to see if that alleviates any of the, uh, traffic issues. We've also just, we're doing some work to, uh, Mr. Sahadi and I have been working on trying to get a system in place where we can pay outside agencies to work the detail as well. It's a little bit of a different situation where it's not the vendor paying, uh, say hypothetically the Westport Police Officer directly. Because of the host agreement, it has to be paid by the city. So I've had some conversations with the surrounding chiefs. I've gotten two agencies to agree, Westport and Sheriff's Department has agreed to become vendors. And, uh, we, uh, they'll bill us, they'll front the money to their officers and then they'll, they'll bill us and we'll pay the bill. So I'm waiting to hear from some of the other chiefs who wanted to run it by their, uh, their corporation council, if you will, to make sure it's something that they could do. So these are some of the things that I'm suggesting.
Okay, excellent. Mr. Sahadi, I have a question. We would need a separate line, line item, correct?
Yes. So, so Counsel, um, Peckham, what we are going to do is we're gonna set up a fund and we're gonna fund the fund with a portion of the impact fee because quite frankly, that was the whole purpose of the impact fee is that, um, there are some impacts on the community, one of which is the detail. And that's what we're doing now with the Fall River Police Detail. So we are providing detail, as the chief just indicated, of our own offices. And theoretically, it's being offset against the impact fee that we're receiving. We will do the same with Westport and Somerset and other agencies that might be interested in participating in the detail.
Okay, excellent. Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, just a couple of things. So first, I would just ask through you if we could just, Mr. Harkins, um, because I know we've had the residents come before us on a number, number of occasions. Um, and I just wanted to give them the opportunity to kind of speak to the concerns that they had. I know he sent us, um, or we did receive a letter basically outlining, um, some of the actions that were taken to try to alleviate concerns, noise pollution issues over there. So if he could just quickly go over that, uh, but before, just to, I guess, stay on the topic of, uh, just the police detail. Could I just, um, through you, Mr. Chairman, just ask the chief and, and maybe, you know, the, the owners of Northeast Alternative and maybe the residents of the detail itself? Do we, do we think the details are working? And the only reason I ask this is that when, when I typically drive by, I find the traffic is worse with the, with the details there. So, um, I'm just curious if it really does make a whole lot of sense. I mean, we're starting to talk about now this, this money coming out of, um, you know, the city to pay for the details. And I just hate to see, you know, if, if there are any, any issues with the details that I don't want to throw good money at bad. Not to suggest that the details are bad, but if, if, if we are gonna spend some money, maybe there are other movements along the, the roadway, um, you know, to try to help alleviate some of the traffic and whether or not that there's a possibility, as I mentioned, um, at one of the meetings. And I don't know if it's a storm culvert that's in front of that property, but we had potentially talked about reaching out to Mass DOT to see if there would be, um, potentially some, I guess, allowance for them to, to get what would be a curb cut and maybe just have some access off of, uh, the roadway there as opposed to going over on the, on the side. So, um, I'd leave it to, I guess, the chief or whoever really wants to, to answer the question, what regards to the details.
Um, the chief can certainly answer as to the details, Counsel Kadeem. But just to bring you up to speed, we had a conversation today with Representative Allen Sylvia. And in the transportation bill that is, um, in front of the governor right now, is monies that have been set aside for a traffic study and the possibility of a traffic light at that location. So, um, we won't know for a bit, but Representative Sylvia is certainly pushing for that.
Yeah, I guess, and I appreciate that. I just, you know, when, when they're in there, even if, even if they get funded, the, the governor's gotta actually release it and it's, and it's.
It's time consuming, right?
If they can then, you know, it takes a while for it to get on the tip. And then, you know, before we see a traffic, um, study that's going out there, we're, we're gonna be, you know, a good five, six years. So I'm just curious to see, regardless of the traffic study, because from my standpoint, it, it, it probably makes more sense to try to get these folks access right onto the, um, you know, to the state highway there, um, as opposed to doing the, the side streets, right? Because I think that probably alleviates a lot of the traffic. So if you can have, and, and I know it probably would impact their parking layout, but if you have a way where you can have one entrance in, one entrance out, and really just block off the, uh, the side entrance, I think that's probably gonna alleviate a good portion of the congestion that the neighborhood is seeing. Until we, until we do that, I don't know that, I don't know how you control, um, outside of constantly being there and, and patrolling. And even at that, I think people are gonna, um, you know, listen, we, we deal with ignorant people all the time, so they're gonna continue to, to be ignorant, those ignorant people. So as much as we put up signs and things of that nature, I mean, people will just park in it. So I, I think at the end of the day, the only real true solution is, is changing the entrance, uh, for that location. And if that takes, you know, um, some money from, from the city, I'd rather see us as opposed to spending, you know, some of the host agreement money that we've gotten for details and, and really kind of throw it in to try to figure out how we can, even if we fund a, a study ourselves, um, or if we have to do a, you know, a private public partnership with, uh, Northeast Alternatives to try to figure out what the costs associated with that, um, constructing that, that entrance. Or even, even if there's a shared cost for a, uh, a traffic study to be done to see if it's even feasible.
Counselor Kadeem, Chris Harkins, if I may. We certainly are, um, can you all, can you all hear me or?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. We're certainly willing to look at any and all solutions. Not a hundred percent sure that, that that really is the issue. And to some degree, I, there's only very few periods of time in which actual customer traffic, um, is created backing, um, to William S. Canning. Now, while, while we're grateful to the, um, Fall River Police Department for all their support and for all the communication and everything else, uh, for the most part, um, it, it, you know, I think there would be an argument to be made that it, that what happens is it is, in a good way, it slows down traffic, um, in both directions on, on William S. Canning that tend to go fast, uh, most of the time. And so as a result of that slowdown, is I think what you're describing when you see it backed up, um, you know, going towards, uh, Tiverton. And, and that's really probably because of the deep, the, the traffic slowing down because of the detail, not even necessarily people, you know, where they allow them, where they allow customers and or the neighborhood, um, when they're stopping traffic to exit, it's really just generally having, having, uh, a detail there slows things down. So, um, while I'm certainly willing and happy to look at direct entrance, I think there'd be a couple of issues. One, I think it's a state highway, right?
Yep.
Still at that point?
Yes.
You're probably still in the same, uh, sort of, you know, quagmire with the state trying to get stuff like that done. And I'm not sure that the problem's really entering. If anything, it would be, you know, I think from the neighbor perspective, um, leaving. And or.
I disagree. I disagree with that one.
Okay. I mean, I'm absolutely.
I have to sit in line for 15 minutes trying to get into my street to get home. So I disagree with that, going in and out.
So do you think that the, the traffic detail improves that situation or hurts it?
Um, both. It helps it because it slows down the traffic because they're normally going 50 miles an hour up and down the street when the speed limit is what, 35? So it helps in that regard, but it's not helping me get down my street faster. It's not help, it is helping me leave my street, but when they force me to take a right out of my street and I don't want to go right, that's an inconvenience to me that I should not have to deal with, or that anybody on the street that lives here should have to deal with. If they want to go left, they should be able to go left. And we shouldn't be inconvenienced because of your shot.
You still have the floor, Counsel Kadeem.
Yeah, no, no. So to Chris, Chris's point, I guess, I guess what I was, and I, and I recognize it's a state highway. So as opposed to trying to get funding for a tip, if we can just go through Mass DOT and allow us, and allow them to give us, and I, air quotations, a curb cut, because that's really what you're gonna be doing, even though there's a limit to cut. But, uh, you know, authority to go, go ahead and, and, and access, uh, some entrance into the, uh, you know, obviously the state highway over there. I think to me would make a little bit more sense if you can cut off the side street entrance, so you have two entrances, um, and how that is configured. But just, um, so for my own identification, I, I mean, I, I drive by that location almost every day and I don't, I never think of actually to, to look at it. Do you have a stormwater culvert that's in front of that property or is that even to the, uh, street? There is a.
There is a, uh, there's an elevation change, but I don't, I would not think that that would be an insurmountable issue. I think I, I have to look at the original site plan layout. I think there's a, uh, a swell there that's probably part of the, uh, general drainage design there, but that, that I don't think would be, uh, a problem.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I don't, so if, if that's not a major hurdle, I, I think, you know, just from, from the city standpoint, from my standpoint, I, I think that's probably something we should probably target to see what we can do to, to help assist with that. Because I, I think what I'm hearing from the, you know, the neighborhood and the folks that are constantly coming before, there's a multiple of the issues. But the first issue is the, is the amount of parking that's taking place, um, on that side street and then trying, you know, obviously with the entrance there, you know, to fight and trying to get into the, into the, down the road over there. So I think if we do that, we kind of eliminate it. Again, not to say that we completely eliminate, you know, the overflow parking, um, place on, on, on the side street. But I, I think that at least tries to address, you know, some of the initial concerns with the congestion in the neighborhood.
Sure, and I'm, we're happy to.
Because I, because I think outside of that, I, I don't know how, outside of closing the business down, how, how you mitigate those, uh, those traffic issues, to be honest with you. I, I think that's the only feasible option that's really realistic that we can, we can kind of. I mean, and listen, I'm okay. I mean, if, if the folks over there are all in favor of the detail and I, I don't want anybody, uh, walking away from the conversation saying that I'm opposed to having a detail. I was just, I was just a little, you know, curious when I, as I mentioned, it's just when you, when you pull up to the, to the location coming, uh, south coast marketplace, going towards Tiverton, you know, you, you, you can always tell when there's, uh, details. Now, whether it's just stopping or whatever the case may be, and I just tend to think that, that creates more of, um, what, how should I say, more of the probably complaints that we feel, uh, in terms of, you know, the traffic, it's the business, it's all this. And I, I agree with you, it's slowing down, uh, the speed of, of the vehicles and they're making it safer. I just, you know, that, that's where I think the, um, perception of the, you know, a problem being generated, I, I think a part of it is part of that detail just being there, that, that, that's all. I, I think that's true.
And I know that this was brought up, um, two years ago during the traffic board meetings that we were attending, about having them put a, an entrance off of William Canning rather than Commonwealth. And that was never pursued. And I'm just wondering why it wasn't pursued back then. And it took two years for them to pursue that.
Counsel Kadeem, can I interrupt for one second, please? Ms. Hutchins, for just procedural purposes, can you just state your name and, uh, and address? I apologize, I, I should have asked.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Gina Hutchins, 84 Commonwealth Ave.
Mr. Harkins, can you do the same?
Yeah, Chris Harkins, 71 Long Shore Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel Kadeem.
Uh, with that, I yield, I'll, I'll turn it over to the, the folks, uh, the individuals that want to speak.
Okay. Ms. McDonald, now you have your hand up. You're on mute too, by the way. Still on mute. And it looks like we, we lost her. I, I have a question and it's, uh, from Mrs. Ferreira, Director of Traffic. A right-hand turn at that location, is that feasible?
Well, we talked about that several times. It would alleviate the, the traffic from cutting through to make the left. But like one of the residents said, at the time that we talked about it, it was, you know, it was, it would be inconvenience for them and why should they make a right turn? But it wouldn't be just for the residents, it would be anybody coming out either for northeastern to get that traffic out of there. We could try the right turn, um, for a month to see how it works, um, if we feel that it is. And we could at least.
All the residents that live here take a left. We take a left, we don't go into Rhode Island, we go to the left. 99% of the time, we take a left. So now I have to take a right. In our entire neighborhood, it has to be inconvenient because of them. We've been inconvenienced for everything else, everything else that we've been going through, noise, pollution, um, traffic, everything. Now we have to be inconvenienced once again because we have to take a right. I just don't think that that's, that's not fair to us, but once again.
But the right turn wouldn't be just for the residents. I mean, the residents would have to take.
But it is affecting us.
But it's for everyone that's coming out of Commonwealth, um, Avenue that would take that right turn.
Ms. Hutchins, if you can, um, we'll let, uh, Mrs. Ferreira finish and then, and then we'll speak individually, if you don't mind.
Sorry, I just, you have to understand, my frustration was going through this for over two years. So I apologize for that. I just, it's, it's an ongoing issue for two and a half years. I'm, it's anger for two and a half years.
I, I understand entirely and there's no need to apologize, believe me. Mrs. Ferreira, I asked the, uh, the feasibility of it because a, a right-hand turn out of that location puts people with marijuana into Rhode Island. That's, that's my issue. Is there a way we could circumvent that? I, I'm, I'm not sure.
No, because there's no way that they can take a, a left turn. Once they take that right turn, they have to go to the rotary to get back and head, you know. Yeah, there's nothing there that they can cut through and you wouldn't want them to do that anyway because it, I think it caused a safety issue. So anyone that comes out of Commonwealth Avenue to take that right, they would go around the rotary and get back on, on, on William Canning Boulevard.
So a, a small amount of their travel will be through the state of Rhode Island, correct?
Uh, correct. All of them have to, yeah.
So that's an issue, I believe, with the right-hand turn only, being that marijuana is not legal in Rhode Island. I think that's something that needs more of a discussion. Chief, any, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fer, uh, chief, do you have any input on that?
I don't, I don't want to speak for, uh, the, the Tiverton chief, but.
Well, I don't want to speak for the the Tiverton Chief, but, um. Well, let me backtrack for a second. You know, when Ms. when Ms. Ferreira, when I called Ms. Ferreira to talk about this, um, we both, um. Realized that this is an inconvenience for the residents to to certainly ask them to to take a a right-hand turn, but we've just been racking our brains. With different ways to deal with the traffic issue. And we also recognize that, um, you know, having a small amount of marijuana can be an issue and pulling into Rhode Island. But again, I don't want to speak for Chief Jones. But I don't think he's going to have, uh, anybody sitting up there. Um, you know, trying to pick off people with binoculars that are coming out of Northeast Alternatives. Certainly, if something happened on the rotary and someone has some marijuana, and I'm sure they would take action, but, um. Again, I'm not speaking for him, but I just don't think he's going to be, uh, have his people doing that.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I I asked the question because I want clarity before and with the the right-hand turn. I know it was brought up at a council meeting. Um, and that's why I'm reiterating, uh, the concerns for that that change. Uh, Mrs. Ferreira, any other ideas? As to what we could do with that location traffic-wise? I'm going to touch upon each topic individually. We'll we'll discuss traffic first since it's a big one. Um, do you have any other ideas?
I mean, the key would be to alleviate the traffic that's heading south and turning onto Commonwealth Avenue. The key would be to fix that, um, so that you don't have the pileup. As many times as I've been there and driven by there. It's the constant pileup that you get because then the road narrows as you approach Northeastern Alternatives and, you know, Commonwealth. If the state would be willing and and at the time, two years ago, the state didn't even want to hear it. Um, we, we were lucky that they were able to fix a pothole that was in their property and that's all that they did was just fix the pothole. Um, so they were not, you know, in at all in in with us to do something there. Whether we try it again, I don't know if Representative Silver can do a traffic light there, uh, but that's going to take years. Getting traffic, if you can get one lane for just that traffic to get into North Alternative, they still have to come out. That's, that's the problem. So. We've already done no parking signs. We've done slow signs. We've done no trucks beyond this point. I think that helped a little bit. I don't think trucks are going down to the cul-de-sac anymore. So that was a big issue.
They still are, by the way. Eighteen millers. Um, what do you call them? The ones that have the construction vehicles on the back of them, flatbeds that are fifty feet long. Every, every size truck you can imagine. I have pictures of it. I can share them with you. I know that some of you are data-driven, so I have all that info if you'd like to see it. Yeah, just let me know.
So we've done all those signs up there. Um. I I I can't think of anything else that we could do unless it you you take a look at the whole, that whole area and configure it a whole new way to get into that building.
Okay, I I agree. Um, and I agree with what what Counselor Kadim had to say. There's not many solutions to this, um, other than to ask to up and move a business like the the traffic, uh, what are we going to do? It's, we have details there. We're recommended putting a right-hand turn into Rhode Island. Um, the light will take a long time. These. These are issues that are gonna, now that we're tackling this, and I do apologize for having this meeting, I wanted to say this earlier. Um, so far off, but with COVID, I did try to schedule a couple of meetings. They were canceled and then. I had a meeting canceled due to, uh, one of our budget hearings. Um, this would have been heard sooner. Also, I I another issue, uh, with that location that, uh, has been brought up. Is, uh, the the tractor trailer. I've heard that a couple of times, but I also read an email today that Northeast Alternatives. Purchased their own truck to do deliveries from a sec- separate location. Uh, Mr. Hawkins, is is there truth to that?
So we we had reached out to every vendor. Um, that has a relationship with, um, Northeast Alternatives. In other words, those that were making deliveries. We asked every vendor to instruct, um, you know, the the delivery, uh, end of their business and or the company in which they. Um, contracted to deliver to us to go on, you know, a short box trucks. And unfortunate, you know, we did this for, you know, months and months and months and they repeatedly just, you know. It it did not happen, regardless of how many times we, um, complained and reiterated, uh, what our requirement was to take deliveries. Uh, we subsequently rented, um. Uh, a space in, uh, a mill building on Pecassett Street, uh, up to a thousand square feet. And there will be, there are no deliveries that come for Northeast Alternatives to that property. Unless it would be like, you know, FedEx, you know, your regular, um, you know, mail delivery carrier. Uh, we bought a box truck and so we can and and do fully control of the deliveries that happen there. In terms of, you know, there, we get deliveries from from vendors, but these are all just vans, small, small things. There will never be, um, any trucks, um, other than, you know, the the usual utility service trucks, right? You know, uh, they've been a another problem for us. Uh, you know, I can forward along emails and back and forth communications that that we have on a regular basis with waste management. And Prax Air, our our CO2 provider, uh, both in timing and, um, you know, mostly timing. Uh, those are the only two. Um, trucks that will be coming to the property.
Okay, uh, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, do we still have somebody from F I G TV on here? Because I'm trying to unmute Mrs. McDonald Nay and it won't let me. Just trying to figure out how. Uh, Ms. McDonald Nay, can you try to unmute it? Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, Council Vice President, uh, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just getting messages from them to unmute her. Oh, she's unmuted now. You can let Grace speak first if you don't want to.
Okay, uh, Grace, go ahead.
Hi, um, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to echo Gina's statement. We have trucks, truck deliveries happening here. Jim, I I my husband's here as well. How often would you say they park right out in front of the white fence? And and we we've got picture after picture after picture of trucks, the trucks doing deliveries here. Eight and eighteen wheels, huge trucks turning around on the cul-de-sac. Understanding it's a business and they have to have deliveries, it 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 can't be going through our cul-de-sac.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hawkins, with that being said, is there a way that we could, uh, make sure there's. That that is not happening and there's maybe a little more diligence? I'm not saying that you're already not being diligent, but maybe some extra precautions?
No, I appreciate that. We, um, we implement this, um. We we bought the truck a week and a half ago. We implemented the the zero, um, delivery policy. We we had previously, uh. Eliminated, I would say ninety percent of it. Uh, of deliveries because they're all going to to Pecassett Street. Uh, there were still a few coming. Um, we have since implemented, we bought the the box truck and implemented zero delivery. Uh, again, other than Prax Air and the trash removal, um, a a couple of weeks ago. So I would, I would agree, I would. Um, you know, acquiesce to the previous comment there that, yeah, up up until, you know. A couple of weeks ago, um, or or even less, that was, that's cracked, but from going forward, it will not be the case.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs. McDonald Nay, anything, uh, further?
Um, I also, um, echo Gina's sentiment when it comes to the right, taking a right only. Um, as it is, a lot of times we have to cut through the store to go up one space to even try and take a left. Because there'll be five cars deep or four cars deep trying to get out of the end of our street. Um, so we, on occasion, yes, do we have to take rights and then come turn around to go back the way we want to go? Yes. But that's not a permanent solution.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Council Vice President, Lil Liberty.
Yep. So, um, Mrs. Hutchins is right. They have been upset about this for the last two years. Uh, is Mr. Hathaway still on here? Yes. Uh, and Mrs. Ferreira, if this. When this originally, when Northeast was originally going in, was there any site plan review? I know that zoning was checked, but was there any site plan review? Did we have that process at the time?
Not to my knowledge. Um, the facility went up and we, I was not aware of it myself.
You were not made aware of it as well.
No one was made aware of this facility, taking the building over. No one was notified. The city council was not aware that there was a host agreement between JCL Korea and, um, Mr. Harkin. Business until it, they finally met with us a year ago this month. In twenty nineteen in December, and they presented that host agreement.
Correct. So, Ms. Fer, you weren't aware of, could you just finish answering that question?
Sorry. There was a traffic study there when they first opened it up for the liquor store. I know that they did a traffic study there of how the traffic was going to be. Um, going into when it was the package store, but after that, there was nothing done and. Alternative opened up and there was no traffic study, no how traffic's going to get in, how traffic's going to get out. Again, not my knowledge, there was nothing done.
And I know, um, Mr. Hathaway, you were in there a lot as far as their addition in the zoning, but even though the zoning. Works, we normally would do a a site plan review and a traffic study. We just did one for the bank on Brayton Avenue that was turning into. Cumberland Farms, so the zoning didn't change, but we still went through that whole process, correct?
Yes, we did, because this was, uh, Cumberland Farms has been started from scratch. Um, when Northeast Alternatives went in there, um, it was a pre-existing building. Um, and it wasn't, it just wasn't done. It was done, like I believe Laura said, for the, uh, liquor store. Um, but it was never required or done in anticipation of, um, Northeast Alternatives. Uh, wouldn't be required, at least by the building department, it wouldn't be required because there was nothing. Done in the parking lot of the complex.
Okay. So my thought process is, um, you know, see, I I feel like under the past administration, dropped the ball on how this was handled. It's not the neighbors' fault. It's not, you know, Northeast's fault. Northeast is trying to run, uh, their business. The neighbors want their neighborhood back to how it was. And I think that even though it was the former administration, the city really needs to. We can't just leave it like this. I had a conversation with, um, Corporation Council. I think he's still on the phone today. Um, you know, what our options are here and, um, he's looking into them, but he did say in the host agreement every. At least once every three years, there needs to be a review. I don't know, uh, which would be now. I think we're we're within that three-year period. Um, I don't know what the answer is, but I, we keep having these meetings. We were here a year ago, December. Um, Rep Sylvia was in front of us at that time and did someone, I'm I'm sorry, forgot who said tonight that he was. Putting in a request for a traffic study from the state. Council Peckham, who said that tonight?
It was brought up. I I'm not sure.
I did counsel.
I did. Hadi, when, when did he, when did he request that? When did, um, Representative Sylvia?
I don't know when he requested it. Um, the mayor spoke with him this afternoon and he indicated that, um, he was pushing. The project along and it was going to be in front of the the governor. Um, as Counselor Kadim pointed out, it will take some time. But it, he's trying to put it through on the transportation bomb.
Okay, um, Hadi or, um, Madal Clark, if we could ask. Uh, either the mayor and or Rep Sylvia for an update on that and when it was put in, just because I appreciate, um, Representative Sylvia's efforts here, but. They were in front of us over a year ago and, you know. Besides that, we're not going to have the delivery trucks now with the zero deliveries. It's, you know, really nothing has happened to help the people in this neighborhood. I mean. They're, they're right. They have, um, cars and trucks and all kinds of traffic there all the time. They text me all the time. They send me pitches all the time. Traffic's backed up the highway all the time. Um, it takes them fifteen minutes to get in or out of their street. Um, it's, it's really not fair to them when the. The issue, the resolution that was before us at the last meeting, which we got a follow-up tonight from the chief. Um. The woman on Quikashan Street, when she spoke at the last meeting, prior to the meeting, I was thinking, you know, how can the city do anything about this because it's. You know, it's a private issue. Those are private houses, um, and it's a neighbor issue, neighbor versus, neighbor versus neighbor. Um, and Counselor Kadim said that this was a, you know, that was a quality of life issue and that, um. We needed to to work on this for her. And here we have a a neighborhood and a business and it's a quality of life issue. We don't want Northeast not to do. Well, in in their endeavor, but at the same time, um, it's not fair to the neighborhood either. To the neighbors, is there any change as far as the smell? I know that that was one of the complaints. Either, um, Gina or Grace?
Um, it still smells on occasion. It still smells on occasion. Um.
If I may, if my, if I may interrupt, I apologize. Ms. McDonald Nay, you just also state your name and address. I I should have done this. I apologize.
Sorry. Um, Grace McDonald Nay, Seventy-three Commonwealth Avenue, follow up on that.
Thank you. Can you, you can continue.
Okay, thank you. Um. There are good days and there are bad days. Um, and we constantly are in touch with Jared. Um, my husband is vigilant about getting in touch with with Jared when it smells outside. Jared's been responsive, but the problem has not been resolved.
Is there anything that they can do as far as, we had this issue with the the gas station fumes on South Main Street? Is there anything further that Northeast can do?
But I may, uh, Counselor, um, so yes, um, we we've, we've, we've taken a lot of steps. Progressively, we have, we have, uh, noticed and we had an uptick in. Um, reports of, uh, odor, starting a couple of months ago. We had, we we thought we had it completely licked. Um, starting a couple of months ago, we it seemed to be, uh, coming back a little bit at certain times and we identified those times where. Or, um, where where we are harvesting, which is part of our process. I mean, we had our maintenance guys on this. Um, we added. Um, you know, we've, over the periods of time, we've added, uh, additional, uh, carbon scrub. We've added additional, uh, ozone. Uh, another, uh, inline layer of mitigation after, um, you know, the original, uh, pre, uh, carbon scrub. Uh, and we're still having problems mostly at harvest time. So we we brought a, um, an engineer in. A couple of weeks ago to, uh, assess our systems, look at them. And, uh, make recommendations. That report we sent to you guys, it should be in your file. Um, so we're going to take those additional steps. We also learned that, uh, the company, the carbons, uh, the carbon filter company. Was bought about a year ago from another company and we understand that that, um. Their carbon recharge is different and not nearly as effective as it used to be. Um, so we're we're identifying new, um, you know, carbon scrubbers. And with the current ones that we have, uh, the recommendation is replace them, uh, more often. We were replacing every six months. Uh, the engineers, um, advising that we should, we should, um, do that every three months. Um, there's also a couple of other recommendations in there, including, uh, slowing down the fan speeds. Um, to provide more area, uh, for mitigation and and a few others. So we're going to implement all of those things. And and see, I'm, you know, at various times, we've had it completely solved, then it seems to come back. And, um. So we're going to continue, uh, and, you know, we we will, we will have it fixed, you know. For a good year or more, there was never any smell at all. And then, you know, so over time, things have changed and we're, we're trying to understand why. And, um, we're going to implement all the engineering, engineers', um, recommendations and hopefully that will be over with.
So, um. Council Peckham, I'm thinking that, you know, as the chief did with the neighbors on Quikashan, and I'm not suggesting that the chief does this because. He has other things to do, but, um, is there a way we can make sure there's an open line of communication? Uh, first of all, I would ask that we table this and and pick it up again. You know, within the next, I'd say, two to three months at the most. You know, within the next, I'd say, two to three months at the most, to make sure that things are moving along. Um, just waited an awfully long time. I don't want that to happen again. But can we make sure that, I know the residents are really frustrated and, and there was some communication breakdown between um, them and, you know, the representatives from Northeast. Can we make sure that there's some, that there's open lines of, of communication between them? I think everybody would be willing to do that.
Yeah, of course, absolutely. Um, Ms. Hutchins?
Yes, can I just ask something um, regarding the smell? Um, which um, Chris Hawkins brought up a, a point that they are growing or harvesting this. I thought that they were not zoned for agriculture when they first opened. And now all of a sudden, they're able to harvest. How did that, how was that approved? How did that get through?
Uh, we, that, we've always, we've always grown and harvested there.
Not when you first opened. I thought the middle part, you go, after you did the addition, that was harvested. But regardless, their, this, their permit was not supposed to be for harvesting or agriculture. It was supposed to be for uh, retail. Now they've gone in, into agriculture. So how did that, how was that approved?
So, Mrs. Hutchins, when you-
How did that change?
What do, what are you referring to when you say their permit? Are you talking about the zoning?
When they first opened, the zoning, when they, the zoning of the building, when they first opened, it was for retail. It was zoned, that location was zoned for retail. And then they started doing, they started growing or harvesting. Isn't that agriculturing? I mean, isn't that agriculture? Like, how is?
Just point, point of information through you to uh, I, I guess the building inspector is, is the zoning over there, does it exclude agriculture? High, what, what, it's highway business, is it?
I know we had, we had this, we had this conversation a few months ago and it said that, well, agr- agriculturing, that's a fine line or that's, we don't know the real definition of it. But it's either you're making it or you're not making it. They were originally zoned from what the, one of the meetings, they were originally zoned as retail only.
Touch upon the point of information with Counselor Kadim. Mr. Hathaway, do you have any answer for that?
Yes, um, to the best of my knowledge, this is, everything that's happening within that building has been happening since day one of its operation. Um, there was always a retail area designated for retail space. And there was always a, a portion of the building that was granted for um, let's say uh, agricultural purposes. Uh, nothing has changed there. Um, to my knowledge, I haven't been in it since it was uh, opened, but this is, nothing's changed within the building. They may process stuff different or something like that, which is out of my control. But um, everything that's there, such as the grow or the agricultural plot, has been there since day one uh, of this operation. And that was the original intent from what I was told from my predecessor and the, the administration.
Yeah, that was the original approvals. The original approvals were for um, all three cultivation, um, product manufacturing and retail. In fact, um, the uh, the cultivation, which is the agricultural uh, component, was the first part of the business to um, commence operation. And that was, that was in April of um, 2019, 18? No? Yeah. So, um-
But that building itself, though, when it was originally there, was zoned for just retail. Then if, if that was okay, that you approved for agriculture, for cultivating, why a year ago was it, was it brought up that the, the difference between, well, is it agricultural or is it not? Like, why was there, why was it being questioned a year ago if it was okay?
I think the neighborhood was quite-
Just through you, the, the zoning piece, if we can just figure out-
No, the zoning, yeah, the, the zoning board was trying to figure it out.
But I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what, what it's currently zoned. And then based on that would give us the uh, limitations as to what cannot be there from, from a zoning standpoint.
And from what, we were told that it was supposed to be retail.
We already had this out, if you recall, at the city council meeting. Um, boy, I'm gonna miss the date, but um, you know, we, we had a large meeting around this issue, if you recall.
Yep. I do recall. And when that building was first there, as for a um, liquor store, it was zoned for retail. So my question is, how did it get approved to go from retail and agricultural and whatever else it is that you're doing there?
No, that's, I guess that's-
How did, how did it get through the zoning board?
Mrs. Hutchins, I guess that's what I'm trying to determine. It, it's not, it's not gonna be zoned specifically just for retail. So the zoning is gonna be uh, specific as to what's, what allowable uses are allowed in that zone. Um, so I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. If, if, whatever the zoning is, and I don't have it in front of me. Uh, but if it's, it's obviously a, a business zone, um, I would assume based on the uh, zoning bylaws, that we would, agricultural should be allowed in that, that zone. If not, um, and I remember our conversation was that there was a, there was a letter that was signed off that um, Northeast Alternatives was up to uh, standard and compliance with all these zoning laws and, and bylaws and ordinances in the um, in the city. So that was signed off when they went to get their license. But I'm, I'm just trying to identify what, what the zoning section is over there.
Uh, so Counselor, if I may?
Absolutely, Mr. Hathaway, go ahead.
It's, I didn't check it recently, but I believe it's, uh, it's a business district in, in that it's Zone B. Um, city had at some point in time given this gentleman full compliance with our zoning rules and laws. And it is signed by the former administration that he was in full compliance and was vented through his process through the CCC um, commission for public uh, import at the time. As, as far as being in compliance, uh, there is a letter that I have uh, from the previous administration uh, signed by the former mayor uh, that this area was zoned and, and agricultural and all that he is doing in that building is in full compliance.
So, so Mr. Hathaway, I, I understand that. And I guess the, you know, the line of questioning is, is whether or not we believe the prior nation did a, a full, um, I guess inspection of this, right? So I guess what, what I'm really looking to do is, is if I went to the use table and I looked under B, right, for business, it will tell me what uses are eligible under that zone. Is, is there anything that would suggest that agricultural or anything in harvesting or agricultural use is, is not allowable? Um, it's not, it's not a, a lawful use in that zone? I think, I think that's the easiest question, you know, for us to either make the determination as to whether or not they are, they are in compliance currently. Um, regardless if they've got a letter saying that they were in compliance when, when they got, they got it. I mean, I would, I would, I would-
If I may, Counselor, uh, agricultural is allowed in all zones in the city except for residential.
Right. And that, that's, and I, and I kinda assumed that that was the case. And that's why I was just trying to get to it. And then if that is, by looking at the use table, then, then, you know, the conversation is a moot point. That's, I guess that's where I was going with it.
Yeah.
Correct. You are correct, Counselor. And the other portion of that is, um, if you go into the definitions of some of this agricultural and what he's doing and everything, prior to the last meeting, I was uh, overused on it. It's been a while, but he seemed to be, prior to the last meeting, that I had to attend in front of the city council. Um, everything that he was doing in the building was allowed.
Okay.
By our zoning.
All right. So it, it's zoned business and there's no restriction for any type of ag- agricultural in, in the business, in a business zone?
Well, it gets complicated looking at the definitions when you go into cannabis and, and agricultural and all this stuff. And you have to read the definitions of that and compare it to what he's doing in the building. And it, at the time, the last meeting that I attended in front of the city council, um, I thought he was in compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Council Vice President, you still have the floor?
I yield.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna touch upon what Council Vice President said. I strongly agree with you. I actually had written it down that I would like to revisit this within 60 days. Um, the sooner the better. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. Counselor Kadim's brought up a couple really good ones. You did as well. Um, I think we have to finally have a serious discussion about this instead of, I know COVID put a damper on everything and then meetings and with COVID being here, it is tough to schedule these meetings. Uh, other committees need time and they, they need, it has to be televised. Um, but I would like to revisit this in 60 days. But in the meantime, um, have a very strong, open line of communication, like uh, Council Vice President said, where we all interact with each other and try to come up with a remedy to this finally. Because I, I, as Counselor Kadim said earlier, I don't know what the answer to this is. I don't, I wish I had a, a definitive answer to solve this, but I don't. Um, I think it needs to be looked at by everybody on here, um, and see if we can come up with the best reasonable solution to this problem. Um, otherwise, it's not gonna go away. And we're gonna be here in six months visiting, revisiting this again. Um, I don't know if anybody disagrees with me, but I, I think it's about time to take the ball by the horns and, and try to find a really good remedy to this problem. Anybody else have anything?
If I may, sir, um-
Absolutely.
You know, a couple of things, and, and I'm very um, cognizant of the concerns of the neighbors and, and um, I, I would like to just elaborate a little bit on, on the idea that nothing has changed or improved or um, been addressed because that's um, false. And, you know, we've taken a lot of steps. I do not believe that there are cars parking down. That we have a full-time staff that, that sits at the top of um-
A clarification, Mr. Hawkins, that, that wasn't directed at you. That was directed at, just in general, this-
No, I'm with you. And, and that was-
Emulation of issues. Um, I, I know you have done it. I, I've read your reports today. Um, actually, I wanted to ask you, JMR Designs.
Yes.
What company is that?
JMR, that's the company.
Yeah, okay. So they went in and, and they had recommended charcoal filter replacement?
Well, yeah, we already had all that stuff, but they, they recommended a, a pre-filter. Um, they, you know, there's a series of things there that he recommends, slowing down fan speeds, a series of, of things. Which we're, we're in the process right now of implementing. But I wasn't, I wasn't actually um, responding to you. I was, I was responding to our, to our um, our neighbors. And, and we are very sensitive to, to them. We communicate um, with, with them regularly. When they have an issue, uh, they make a phone call and it gets answered and we immediately respond. Um, we're not um, people who are sitting there saying that, you know what I mean? You know, not listening, it's out of our hands. We are proactive in, in addressing all of these things. I don't, I, I have to say that I, I don't believe that it's true that, that, that cars are regularly going down their street that would be customers of ours, nor trucks. We have a person that stands there to make sure that that doesn't happen. And so while I'm happily um, willing to have however many further conversations and look for ultimate solutions, um, I think we're talking about very limited periods of time. Um, regular, where there's a higher level of, of traffic. Uh, but you're not, it's not like this is Monday through uh, Sunday, seven days a week, 24/7 that this is happening. This is a couple of hours in a couple of days during a week's time. And so I think we have to look at it from um, we have to be reasonable about what it is that we're talking about and honest about what we're talking about.
Right.
And, and as long as we're all doing that, then we can have true uh, conversations that we can get to meaningful answers. But if we're not being honest and there, and truth is not there, then it's difficult me, for me sometimes to sit and listen to things that aren't true. While I'm saying that, we're super sensitive and want to be good neighbors at all times. And so I'm not saying this to, to, to uh, incite um, our, our neighbors because we want nothing more than, for them to be happy. And so uh, I, I'll just end with that unless there's any other questions for me.
No, I do, I do have to say, every time you called upon you and Mr. Goslin do uh, you respond right away. You give us the paperwork or documentation or whatever, whatever it may be that we request, then uh, it's appreciated. Uh, Chief, yeah, do you hand up, did you have something to say?
Thank you, Counselor. My question was for Mr. Hawkins, is there a possibility in the future of a an Enecks or another location that would draw some of that traffic away from William S. Canning?
Yes, we do have uh, two additional locations um, that we're working on right now. Uh, one um, one that's not, not far. So yes, uh, the, the short answer is yes. Uh, and I do think that over time generally, um, you know, more and more places will open, um, which will, um, you know, bring down our traffic to some degree. And uh, while we've remained um, popular, even with others opening, I think over time, you know, there will be reduction in it. Uh, that's not to say that we shouldn't look for solutions now. I, you know, I respect our neighbors. We want, we do not want them to be impacted the way in which they are. I, I, and, and so I, when I was saying what I was saying earlier, I, I don't want people to think I'm attacking them in any way. It's just, you know, um, we just wanna be fair about it.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, thank you, Chief. Um, now, Council Vice President, um, I forget who said this. Um, do you remember who mentioned the, was it a site plan review can be done every three years or the traffic?
Well, I spoke to Corporation Council today. Um, and in there, um, in the host agreement, it calls for, he sent me the, it's in an email, so I'm not able to get it now, the wording in there that they're um, able to review their agreement every three, one, at least once every three years.
Okay. Uh, is Cooperation Council with us?
He-
Attorney Ramsey?
I'm here, can you hear me?
How are you, attorney?
Good. I'm trying to pull up the email. I mean, I can summarize, but it's better to read the actual email I sent to uh, Counselor LaLiberla today.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not fine. But in essence, the contract, um, it anticipates that there sometimes needs to be a review of the contract, particularly in um, a business like marijuana, which is pretty new, um, both to the city, the residents and, and the businesses. Uh, it doesn't mean you can-
Find it. Sorry.
Go ahead, if you wanna read it, if you have it, Pam.
So it's in section four, 4.1, the, this agreement shall commence on the effective date and will end on the date that the company ceases to conduct operations in Fall River. Notwithstanding the previous sentence, the parties agree that they will, from time to time, at not less frequently than once every three years, review the terms and conditions of the agreement. The party shall endeavor in good faith to conduct such review while remaining mindful of the needs of the city, the development of Northeast's business, the development of the industry sector and marketplace and other relevant considerations.
Your take on that, Attorney Ramsey?
Well, I mean, some of the terms can be adjusted if um, if it requires. Now, it doesn't mean that anything um, super material that we can't just change terms for no reason. I mean, the contract's a contract, but I think the contract did assume that there's some adjustment period. And if we find that there's something that is necessary, either for the community or for the business, that we can talk, that we can have a discussion, that we could adjust as necessary. Um, you know, the problem, I've been listening and the problem I have, there doesn't seem to be a, a real solution. I, I mean, everybody wants to fix the problem. Um, but I haven't heard a tangible solution that the city can go back to Northeast Alternatives and sit down and have a conversation. So until we have that, I'm not sure exactly what um, what we would change on the contract.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. And uh, like I said earlier, I agree, this is a very complicated situation. Um, there is no direct fix to this. Um, Mr. Goslin, um, all right, do you have anything to uh, to add? I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't ask you earlier.
Council Peckham, no, thank you uh, very much. Uh, certainly, you know, it's, it's welcoming to hear that we want to uh, really promote the open lines of communication. I, I think that that's the best resolution um, for the now, uh, addressing these complaints as they do- um, for the now, uh, addressing these complaints as they do develop. Obviously you can see we have a lot of mechanisms in place to mitigate the grievances that have been before you. And I certainly go, um, I really do. I put my heart into it. I'm, I'm there in the neighborhood. I try to be as proactive and reactive to the complaints. Uh, you know, we're, we're trying. We're, we're doing a good job here and, um, I thank the, I thank the neighbors. I thank them for their patience. Thank you all, your audience.
Thank you, Mr. Goslin. I also want to thank the neighbors for your patience. Um, I know that it has been a while and, um, we are going to see what we can do to, uh, if not fix this entirely, um, try to alleviate as much as the problem as possible. Uh, Ms. Hutchins?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just end with a couple of things. I know that I've gone back and forth with Jared regarding, um, the, um, sound ordinance. I know they're having trash done before seven o'clock during the week and before eight o'clock on weekends. Um, they're having truck deliveries, which sound the air gas truck that sounds like a freight train going through your house before seven o'clock during the week. Um, trash is being done at 6:30, which is very loud and wakes everybody up in the neighborhood as well as the air truck. Um, and it seems like it, it keeps going on and on like weekly. And I keep saying, this is still happening, still happening. And it's like, it just falls on deaf ears, I feel. You may be contacting them every week, but nothing is being done. It, it just, it continues to happen. Um, I just, it's, it's very frustrating, um, when you're trying to sleep and you're woken up by this. Um, and then late at night, when it's maybe going into 11 o'clock at night, you have employees out back talking, yelling, screaming, and bedrooms are right there. We can hear every word that's, that's being said. And it wakes kids up. They have to get up for school the next morning. Um, and then there's smoking outside and it drifts into our yards or into our homes and we can't open the windows because of that. And it's, I just feel like I, I, in saying this weekly to Jared and it's just nothing's happening. And I just wanted to point that out. And for Chris Harkins, I know that you said that you looking for facts, you, you know, as long as the truth is being told. Well, I'm not lying. Um, I can show you pictures of everything. I can show you videos of everything. Um, so that, the only thing I'm saying is truth. Um, and I do know there was one other thing. They were doing construction before 6:30 on a Saturday morning. I believe it was a Saturday morning and which involved the crane, them soaring out the side of their building, waking everybody up in the neighborhood. I just, something really needs to be done about a sound ordinance. Um, it's just, it's, it's going on too long and it's just, if something could be done about that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Uh, Counsel Vice President?
So to me, that seems like it would be the easiest thing to fix, certainly much easier than the traffic.
Definitely.
We do have ordinances in place, um, and I missed it if either, um, Chris or Jared said that you have been in touch with your vendors about not doing things before certain times.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can send you communications, uh, both Prax Air and Waste, Waste Management's the worst. Prax Air uh, has been pretty good. They screwed up, I think, you know, very recently, uh, it might've been even as early as last week, Jared, you might pipe on that, but yeah, we, 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 we tore them up again and, you know, again, profuse apologies, won't happen again. Um, every time it does, we call them and say, you know, guys, you know, um, them, you know, there's one other company, we've, we've threatened this and we, we just, you know, assume it'll probably happen with the, with the other company. Waste management is a nightmare. Those guys don't care. We call them just about weekly. And they, you know, they're now at a point where basically saying, you know, we don't care what you say. And my response in the latest time was, well, the city probably is going to care because you're breaking their, um, their regulations, not mine. I'm asking you because we want to respect our neighbors and you guys don't give a shit. Maybe the city is going to have to take care of you on this.
So that my, my question or my thought process would be that, um, Madam Clerk, that the, um, if we need to make a motion to do so, that's fine, that, um, we get the, the three vendors that you just spoke of, um, specifically Waste Management, you said there was two more, there was.
Uh, no, it's really Waste Management and Prax Air.
And that the city send them a letter. I mean, if they're not going to listen to the person that they have a contract with to do business with, um, then perhaps the city should send them a letter with, um, copy of our ordinance and, and what the ramifications of them, you know, not listening or not abiding by it. I mean, I feel like that would be the easiest thing to fix. And, um, if it, the last thing I heard was the employees, um, outside at 11 o'clock at night. I think that's a a conversation with the, the management at Northeast. Unfortunately, uh, I mean, they could certainly ask them to congregate somewhere else. I'm not sure where the back doors are or, or what they're doing, or if that's when they're leaving. As far as smoking, um, I mean, there's not a lot of, we can do about that. If, if your neighbor smokes, it, whether it's a business or, or resident, you know.
It's not cigarettes either, I must add.
Right, but that's.
Not cigarettes.
That's where I'm trying to, that's where I'm trying to go with around truth. Um, and, um, you know, look, we have a policy. We moved any, uh, break area for employees to the front of the building, uh, beside, um.
I'm sorry, you broke up. Could you say that again?
Yeah. Yeah, we moved the, we, you know, and, and employees are required to go to the front if they're going to smoke. And there is no smoking of any cannabis on, on site. I can assure you that it's illegal for us to do that. Every employee, um, knows that. So that is not happening. We monitor that. We have security blocking the building, um, every hour of every day. Okay, so any notion or accusation that says that is false. And that's where I, I have.
Next time it happens, I will have it noted. I will have them take a video. It actually wasn't myself that noticed it. It was a neighbor of mine.
I would absolutely like you to do that.
Sure. Will do.
That person would be fired immediately and they know it. Um, so, um, and furthermore, I, uh, you know, Jared, we, we'll further look into this, but we've been vigilant about, um, forcing our employees to comply with our standard operating procedures around not congregating in the back of the building, only in the front. And, um, and I believe that, um, that that, those processes are being followed, um, strictly. And so to the extent that they're not, I'd ask you to call Jared, which you, which I know you have a, a good and open communication line with. And if you see any of these things happening, you tell us and we will act immediately.
Counsel Vice President?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Hawkins, did you want to, the Hutchins, did you want to respond to that? Sorry.
No, I just said, thank you. And
I mean, that seems like an easy enough.
Any of the neighbors notice it? Yeah.
Um, Mr. Harkins, you have cameras all around the building 24/7, correct? So if they said at 11 o'clock, someone was out there smoking, something more, it seems to be, you could check and, okay, and address the situation. So those seems like those are very easy fixes. And, um, these are rules that they have within their own company. So if their employees aren't abiding, they're, um, they're willing to act on that. I'm sorry. Mrs. Grace, did you want to speak?
I, I do. Um, Mr. Harkins, I will say, and I, I did comment how, uh, responsive Jared is. I also will say that not all your employees, but some of them are very vigilant about, see if they catch it, seeing anybody trying to park in our areas. They're very vigilant about asking them to leave. But to say that this only goes on for a couple of hours, when you run a special, you ran a special and the, the reason I looked it up is because the traffic for an entire week was insane. I'm like, this is like weekend for days. And it was when you were running, running this Bud promotion and it was like a weekend almost every day of the week.
There's probably, you're probably talking about leading up to Thanksgiving and there are certain times, yeah, that get, that are just busy, like in front of holidays like that. And we, we know that and we recognize and we try to, you know, have, have details then. And so I, look, I'm not just going to sit here and, and give you lip service and tell you that, 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 that at certain times that in certain days and even, you know, multiple days in a row where it's busier than normal. But I guess my point was it's not every day, seven days a week like that.
But to clear up, there are no, there, there are not any mistruths going on here based on the fact that yes, there are still people that get through and park in our neighborhood. Yes, the other day when you closed down for whatever reason, did we have a million people turning around in our driveways? Or attempting to turn around in our street and our cul-de-sac? Yes, we did. So, a, and you were, of course, there's no one manned there. So your customers are coming down our street. You, they're shocked because you're closed and now everyone's getting their driveways turned around and off. They're knocking our cones over or they're going around in the cul-de-sac. So it's, it's, it's not an all or nothing thing. And I, I do want to compliment the efforts of your employees and the efforts of Jared and the efforts in general because they have been there. I'm not saying they're not. But the, the completes we've had from the beginning have not changed.
I, and I hear you. And, and I guess I, I can say that we will continue to do everything we possibly can. Um, including,
I appreciate that.
Including, um, looking at, um, Counselor Kadim's recommendation around entry uh, directly off of, uh, William Canning Boulevard. And I also had a thought when uh, the conversation was, um, around a right-hand turn only. Um, it seems to me that, um, that there would be room there to have uh, a two-lane exit, a right only and, and a left. So it's not, uh, necessarily one or the other, but you can get uh, more people out if there's two exit lanes, one that would be, um, uh, dedicated to right. Uh, and then that would give people an opportunity. If they didn't feel like waiting to take the left, they can go right and probably get turned around back and frankly, safe, more safely, uh, to where they were going by going right, but not forcing the neighborhood um, to make, to, you know, make that right, but, but have the option.
But then trying to get down the street to come home, we would have to sit in the traffic, the same traffic as the people that are trying to get into your, your business.
Right. No, that's why I said.
That wouldn't work either.
Right. No, but to look at the option of two things. One, entering directly onto our property from William Canning to eliminate backup there. And the second was on the exit putting two exit lanes, one right, one straight slash left.
I, I additionally, have, has anybody noticed down at the, at the mall now that now that they've put that entry right in off the highway, the traffic's not blocking like it was?
Right. That's what we're talking about with the.
Uh, yeah, it's, is that, I'm seeing a huge difference in the traffic heading, um, towards the mall, coming off the highway, being able to stay in that right lane and go right into the mall.
That's, that's.
Something like that off, off, at Canning would be awesome.
Right. That's what we're referring to. That was Counselor Kadim's recommendation. I think we should look at that first and foremost.
Thank you. Might still have the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mrs. Farrar, does the city have any ability to do anything on that road or do we have to wait for the state?
Well, Commonwealth belongs to the city. That's not the state.
No, um,
in front, that would be the state.
It is.
Yeah.
Um, and there has to be this study done that Rep. Sylvia has asked for? I mean, is there a way to fast track this in, in any way, shape or form?
They would have to be sent a letter, just like South Coast, um, it, it took us almost two years to, to get that right lane in there. Um, and the state had to be involved. Their engineers had to come down. They had to take a look at it. They had to study to make sure it could be done. So the same thing would happen, uh, for Northern Alternatives. They would have to come down and see if it's even feasible to have a right lane going into their property.
Okay. And I'm sorry, you said there has to, someone has to send a letter? Is that what you said?
Yeah, a letter would have to be sent to them.
Okay.
Counsel Vice, Counsel Vice President, if I may interrupt, um, is it possible for the city council to draft if we could, uh, see if we could expedite this process being that it is a exponential matter, something that we need to clarify sooner than later?
Mrs. Farrar?
No, I actually directed, uh, even one of you, I apologize.
Can be done. I think we should find out and see exactly where Representative Silva is with the traffic lights and all of that to see where that's at because that'll change the, that whole area drastically if they're going to approve the lights. Um, so I think we need to see where he's at with that. If, if a letter has been sent from the representative and if not, then then we need to send a letter letting them know that we like for them to take a look and see if a right lane can be, um, you know, constructed there to go right into the, uh, parking lot.
Madam Clerk, you're going to send a correspondence to the mayor and Representative Sylvia?
Yes.
Asking for an update? I mean, he was with the neighbors, uh, a year ago this month. So I would hope that it, the letter was sent or, or his inquiry was sent a, a long time ago. I yield counsel.
Thank you, uh, Madam Vice President, um, I have a question. Um, Ms. Hutchins, you stated that there were people outside smoking marijuana. Um, is it, it obviously not all on the property of Northeast Alternatives, but out off the property as well?
Um, well, that was sent, said to me from a neighbor of mine who abuts their property as well. So I did not physically see this happening. It was just one of her or their complaints regarding them, that people were out there at 11 o'clock at night, they're smoking, they, it goes right into their yard or into their um, rooms because the windows are open.
Now, what I want to clarify is.
It was marijuana, not, it was marijuana, not cigarette. Yes.
So to clarify, it's not specifically the employees we're talking about. It's maybe people that are purchasing the marijuana there and then going out on the sidewalk or in the street and, in their car or.
I would assume, I, I, I don't know that answer, but I would assume it would be employees because I don't think the customers are hanging out in the corner of where, where I'm referring to. Um, I would think the customers would be on the other end, like near the exit, not far in the corner where they gather for their breaks.
Okay. Thank you. Um.
But again, if it happens again, I will ask them to note the time and I will forward that information along. I did not physically see that.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, uh.
Oh, absolutely.
Not too much document and I would like to see it as well, um, if you don't mind. Um, I think that's how if we all worked together, I think we had a great open dialogue tonight and took a step in the right direction. Um, let's find out if that letter was sent, um, by Representatives, uh, Silva and Sylvia and we'll go from there. Um, and also again, like I stated earlier, I would like to reconvene within 60 days to see where we go, uh, where we've gotten with this. Uh, Mr. Goslin, if there is an issue with the employees smoking on the property, um, can we address that? Is that something that can be? I don't know what the, uh, protocol is for, uh, the employees, if they can smoke while they're on, on the job or on, while they're working. Is, is that something that you guys allow?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, there is in-house memorandums that are all detailing, uh, you know, appropriate ways to conduct oneself. And part of that is to reiterate that, um, that consumption of cannabis on the property, off the property is not permitted. End of story. Uh, if anyone's toured the property recently, there's approximately 12 signs posted throughout the, uh, uh, facility promoting just that. Okay. So it's very black and white. Um, Ms. Hutchinson and any other neighbors that have my direct, uh, contact information can certainly contact me directly. Uh, it will be addressed. We do have zero tolerance for circumstances surrounding the use of, uh, cannabis. Uh, so I, I can certainly, um, uh, everyone can rest assured that that would most definitely be considered, uh, a pressing matter and addressed rather quickly, uh, to say.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Goslin. Um, Chief, one question. Uh, no, no worries. Um, is there a way, maybe we can relate to the detail offices, uh, not so much for the employees, but the, uh, the people that may be purchasing and then leaving and maybe smoking in their vehicles because that is illegal. Uh, so it is, that is something that we can address maybe fairly easily to maybe let the detail offices know to be, uh, to be on the alert, uh, on, on the lookout for that.
We will. That's not difficult. That, that we'll put a, uh, a memo out, um, to anyone that takes the detail on the system and they'll, they'll know that there's something that, you know, we're asking with, with, with management and counsel to enforce.
Okay. I think if we set a precedent there where if, uh, we, um, enforce that to somebody as a, a, a citizen that goes into purchase and then get in their vehicle and they start to smoke and we set a precedent where the four repities, we have no tolerance for that at all at that location or in general, um, it may. we have no tolerance for that at all at that location or in general. Um, it may lessen the amount of people that want to do that there, knowing now that the four of PD is paying attention and uh they may wait to go home to do whatever they do with their marijuana. Um, that's why I ask that. So I appreciate it, Chief. Thank you. Uh.
I would suggest that, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, Council. I would just suggest that someone that's gonna do that with a police officer standing there, he's not very bright, but uh, we'll certainly, uh, if that comes up, we can certainly address that.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you, Chief. Council Vice President?
Um, I'm sorry, when did you say the busy, Mr. Hawkins, when did you say the busiest time is there?
Um, busiest times are typically on Friday, um, afternoons, evening. Um, Saturdays and, you know, mostly evening, I'm sorry, uh, morning-ish, you know, uh, through midday.
Yeah.
Um, and then Sunday mornings are typically um sort of historically, COVID world is is a bit di- different. Um, it used to be that Saturdays was the busiest day, you know, and later on Fridays. And now it's sort of like, you know, Friday in the afternoon and, you know, part of the day Saturday and morning Sunday.
So, and Mrs. Farrar, we need the state's permission, but is the state going to pay for any changes there, or is that on the city?
If if the state is gonna do the work, it would be on them. That's why they're probably gonna be hesitant to do anything there. But they would be the ones to be making the changes and paying for it. Um, we wouldn't.
To, if I if I may, uh, I have some experience in this, just in my, you know, past development life, that typically, you know, the, you know, whoever whoever's requesting the work in in a state highway pays for it. Um, right, but and, and so it's the the problem with the state is just getting them to move. Now, it can be done, particularly with, if there was pressure from Allen, um, and maybe, you know, a few other um, senior folks up at, you know, up in Boston, which I can, I see what I can do to help that things along. But um, I I think that that's, you know, they're both somewhat heavy lips with the state, just to get them to move, especially with COVID world. But um, we can, we, I mean, I think we, I think the, what's clear is we gotta try.
Correct. So my my thought process is um, on Friday afternoon or Saturday afternoon, you said it's busy?
Early, like midday, yeah.
If um, maybe our next move um to the chair would be that we, you know, meet out there and and see, you know, I mean, I've seen it for myself. I've driven by, I've I've gone around the neighborhood. Um, but I think it would be helpful if if we all saw an action and and had a conversation on site, which, you know, we're we're allowed to do because it would be for discussion.
Yep.
Um, and maybe Miss Farrar could meet us out there. So I'm just gonna ask that one more time. The state would have to approve of anything that we did, but if the city's requesting it, the city would have to pay for it?
Or or, you know, whatever partnership or that we would agree to that, yeah. Um, the state, the state, if it's being requested like that, uh, it's on private property. It's it's a consider a cut for them. And um, so any work that's getting done, you gotta bond it, any portion of that work, which is inside of their, you know, jurisdiction. But they wouldn't be paying for it. They just need to approve it.
Okay, all right. Uh, so Madam Clerk, you'll find out where they're at? And then we could coordinate with the chair um to meet out there, either on a, maybe on a Friday afternoon, Miss Farrar could meet us as well?
I think that's a good idea.
Yes, we'll find out tomorrow. All right.
I'd be happy to uh attend that as well.
Great. And I just, I'm sorry, I just had one more question before I yield. Mr. Goslin, I missed it. What what is your um position at Northeast, your actual title?
Director of Security, ma'am.
Thank you. Now I yield.
Thank you. Um, I concur. I I think that if we all meet out there, um, it it, again, a step in the right direction. It's something positive. Um, it's more than we've uh been able to do so far. Um, so let's go from there. We'll meet and uh, I would like to uh recommend a motion to uh table this um for within the next sixty days, uh, well, within next sixty days, the latest being sixty days, hold another public safety meeting to address this matter one more time. Um, hopefully by then, we'll have some uh solutions to a lot of the problems that we have. Um, is there a motion to table?
I make a motion.
I'll second that. Um, Madam Clerk, roll call.
The motion to table, Counselor Kadeem? Counselor Libby Lebo?
Yes.
Chairman Pecum?
Yes. With that being said, I would like to thank everybody for coming out. Um, it, we all need to work together, and I think this was definitely um something positive. And uh, again, I thank you guys for all coming out. Um, is there anything further from anybody?
Also, you're letting us know when we're gonna meet?
Absolutely, Chief. Absolutely. Um, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, before that, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, so at the meeting, would you um, please make sure that it go, when we do do it, that it goes to the chief, um, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Goslin, Ms. Farrar, and the neighbors? If the neighbors, I have a representative that they would like to meet at location? Yeah, for the traffic.
Yes.
After we get the response from from where that's at?
Yes.
And perhaps I actually Representative Sylvia as well. Thank you.
Okay, actually, I, before I motion to adjourn, um, Mr. Hathaway, um, one question for you, if you don't mind. I uh, it was said that there was a, an issue with a fan noise at that location. Are you aware of that by any chance?
I am not. I do know that Mr. Hawkins has been installing different types of filters to alleviate the, working on the problem with the uh, with the odor that some of the neighbors have complained about. And with that said, it might be them fine-tuning the motor to make sure that it's uh, the fan speed is being adjusted properly um i- in the process. So I think if there is a humming, which I will check on a regular basis, uh, now that it's been brought up, um, but I would assume it's probably from one of the filters that uh they're adjusting and trying to get the uh final touches to uh in regards to the odors.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Hutchins, yes?
Good. Um, that humming noise has been there since day one.
Okay, now that's something we could uh, we are gonna meet there in person and.
Is it coming back to the building?
You're not gonna hear, you're not gonna hear it during the day because there's so much other noise going on. It's at night when you're trying to sleep. It's a humming. It's a loud humming.
All right. I I will, I'm out. Many nights, I will check on that and I will uh.
Okay.
And pinpoint it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Um, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
The motion to adjourn, Counselor Kadeem? Counselor Libby Lebo?
Yes.
Chairman Pecum?
Yes, ma'am. All right, everybody. Thank you so much for coming out. And hopefully from, hopefully from here on out, we'll have nothing but a but positive uh come from this. Uh, I I appreciate your time. Have a great night. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.